Well, clearly, clearly someone has not set... Oh, there we are.
We are on the air. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. And I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, these microphones are still taking you all to get used to. So, roll call, Mary.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Tenopah. Here. And councillor Coburn is excused, but I think he might phone in if he's able to receive reception where he's out on vacation. Okay, well, we have several public hearings this weekend, this evening. That should go quite smoothly. And first is for the Comcast franchise agreement. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:18 PM. And I believe you've got some additional information.
I do, Mayor. I told Mike Brzezinski that I would try to cover this for him. You discussed this amendment in your work session on Monday. At Monday, your direction to staff was to polish up the language concerning tree trimming to make sure that the city had authority to require appropriate notices to citizens so that no one was surprised in the event of any necessary pruning. The approach that staff in coordination with Comcast would like to take is we would ultimately like to bring this back to you as part of an ordinance revision that would affect all tree pruning by utilities for that purpose, I mean generally on utilities in the right-of-way. But in the meantime, the revised language that is before you says that tree trimming and applications therefore shall be in accordance with city ordinances, and in the absence of any specific ordinance requirement, subject to such terms, as the city shall reasonably require for such purposes. So, the ball will then be in the city's court to come up with appropriate procedures, to review any such applications, and to provide appropriate notice to neighbors. We've not previously had a problem with Comcast on tree pruning in the right-of-way, and we're not anticipating one, but Comcast has been willing to give us this fairly broad grant discretion. And I think that was the only concern raised by the council, and I hope that language will address the council's concern.
All right, any questions over that? Okay, is there anyone here that has any comments over this item, over the Comcast franchise agreement? Okay, not seeing any. And with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. And council, there's an ordinance on page two. Would you like the first reading?
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance amending chapter 3.26 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive cable subscription, or subscriber television system franchise to Comcast of Oregon II, Inc., and Oregon Corporation, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise, and repealing ordinance 5687.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
No, for the reading.
For the reading.
Yeah.
Second reading, title only.
Second.
That was the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
An ordinance amending chapter 326 of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive cable subscriber television system franchise to Comcast of Oregon II, Inc., and Oregon Corporation, fixing terms, conditions, and compensations of such franchise, and repealing ordinance 5687.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All right, okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, and thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mike. Mm-hmm, thank you. All right, next is another public hearing, and this is vacating an access easement for Coastal Farm subdivision. And so with that, I'll open up the public hearing at 7:21 PM. And is staff here making comments? Yes, Mike?
In this case, we're considering the vacation of a private access easement that was granted through the Coastal Farm property for the benefit of the kennel property to the east. So Coastal Farm Development is at Highway 20 and Goldfish Farm Road. They currently have one building. The access easement was a requirement with the initial 2001 development of Coastal Farm. They were required to provide an easement through their property for the kennel property. Part of the initial Coastal Farm development included a subdivision plat, and that plat is where this access easement was dedicated. The only reason the city's involved in this issue is because the easement was dedicated on a plat map, therefore it requires it to go through the vacation process to eliminate that easement. The reason that Coastal Farm is requesting that the easement be vacated is that they are proposing to expand their development with a large addition to the building that would cover that easement area. So the yellow or orange up here is their existing building. They're proposing to expand down here to the south. This is where the existing access easement is. They're proposing to move it down here to the south, approximately 250 feet to the south. Coastal Farm is currently in negotiation with the kennels to finalize the new easement language. I'm not sure if a representative for Coastal Farm is here tonight to discuss the negotiations or not. Staff recommends that the council approve the proposed easement vacation with the stipulation that the two parties agree on the new location for the easement and have the new easement signed and recorded with the county. When the new easement is recorded, then staff would come back to the council for a second reading of the vacation ordinance. Any future dealings concerning the easement that then would be strictly between the two property owners? If you have any questions, I could try to answer those.
Right, any questions? Mike? All right, okay. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item? This is on the vacation. Okay, not seeing anyone. And with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:24 PM.
Can I read the ordinance first time?
And you just need a first reading.
Right. An ordinance vacating an access easement on Lot 1 of the Coastal Farm subdivision plat, Lynn County Survey Number 23139, in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
And that's all we do this evening, just that first reading. Okay? All right, thank you, Mike. Okay, next is a public hearing. This is proposed renaming of two sections of public streets. This is an ordinance on pages 36 and 38. And with that, at 7:25 PM, I'll open up the public hearing. And does staff have any comments on this one?
Okay, tonight we'll be considering street name changes for two separate sections of public streets, and I'll go through those individually. Oregon Revised Statutes includes a procedure for renaming streets in Oregon cities. The key sections of that statute state that the planning commission shall recommend to the city council the renaming of any existing street if, in the judgment of the commission, the renaming is in the best interest of the city. If the planning commission makes such a recommendation, then a public hearing is set before the city council to hear testimony regarding the proposed name change. After the hearing, the council can approve the street renaming by passing an ordinance or deny the renaming by resolution. If the street name change is approved, then copies of the ordinance are sent to the county for recording and map revisions. City staff would then notify affected property owners, as well as the post office and any other agencies needing the information. So the first of the two cases is the proposed renaming of a section of 25th Avenue. Tried to show here on the assessment. The case was brought to our attention by Lynn County due to conflicts between their official records and the addressing of homes on this street. This section of street that's highlighted here was originally platted and named 25th Avenue on the Cribs First and Cribs Second Edition subdivision plats in 1971. It appears that homes along this section of street began being built in about 1976. For some unknown reason, when the homes were built, they were given Erman Street addresses. It's possible that at some point, the city decided that Erman Street made more sense, but failed to make the street name change official through the county. Nevertheless, the official name on county records is 25th Avenue. As a result, all but one of the homes along the street in question are addressed as Erman This is intended to show all of the green highlighted properties are actually addressed as Erman Street. The one property that is not is actually addressed 2463 25th Avenue. If the street name change is approved and the street officially becomes Erman Street, the only property that will be affected will be the 2463 25th Avenue. The owner and/or the resident of that property would need to go through the process of changing their address with their credit card companies and so forth. If you decide to deny the proposed name change and it remains 25th Avenue, then the other 21 homes on the street will still have addresses that conflict with the official street name. That's case number one. I'm going to go ahead and go on to case number two, and then we can discuss them. The second case is the proposed renaming of a section of relatively new street that was named North Albany Road, and that's highlighted here in red, on three recent subdivision plats: Benton Woods in 2007, Clarewood subdivision in 2009, and Benton Woods Phase II in 2011. The city's transportation system plan shows a minor collector street that is extended, being extended west of Crocker Lane at the point where North Albany Road will intersect with Crocker Lane. So the blue here represents the existing North Albany Road, comes up through the subdivision here. This blue section is a section that's not yet constructed. The transportation system plan shows this minor collector extending from Crocker Lane over to Scenic Drive. The proposal to rename this section of street was initiated by the city's fire department. The fire marshal believes that changing this section of street to 23rd Avenue would result in less confusion for emergency responders. I think I've got a better... Yeah, we can see here maybe this is 25th Avenue, this is 24th Avenue, this is the North Albany Road that the fire department is suggesting we change to 23rd Avenue. Under the fire department's proposal, this street would be named 23rd Avenue from Scenic Drive all the way to Crocker Lane, as shown here with this red. Now, the dark red are streets that do not currently exist, but as development occurs, we anticipate that at some point between here and this intersection will be the continuation of that street. There has not been a lot of development on these two sections of street to date. Only one of the lots fronting this section of street has been developed, that one right there. There are a couple of other houses along that section, but they are all fronting, I believe it's Laura Vista Drive, so their addresses are Laura Vista Drive. Because no building permits have yet been issued for any of the other lots on that street, no addresses have been assigned to those lots. As with the previous case, if the proposed name change is approved by the council, an ordinance would be sent to, this time Benton County, for recording and map revisions. The property owner at 3004 North Albany Road would need to change their address to 3004 23rd Avenue Northwest. In contrast to the other case, if the council chose not to approve the street name change, then nobody would be affected. Nothing would change, as opposed to the first case where we would have the continuation of a discrepancy. So with that, I will make one point of clarification. These are two distinct cases and may be approved or denied individually. If you choose to approve one and not the other, we simply need to make that clear in any motion that's made.
All right, any questions, Mike? Great.
On the first one, there's no safety issues involved with having the street remain Erman as opposed to renaming it back to 24th or 25th?
It's currently 25th.
Okay, but they're saying that they're naming themselves, they've given their name Erman.
Their addresses are Erman.
So is there any inherent safety issues because of that?
To the best of my knowledge, it would probably clarify things. So instead of if...
To whom, I guess?
Well, to emergency responders, for example.
That was my question. Is there any issues for safety vis-à-vis Erman versus...
Well, it's hard for me to speak for the fire department, but they have, I believe that because these are addresses Erman, it makes sense to actually officially change the name of that street to Erman rather than have it be 25th and have all the addresses addressed off of Erman.
To the council, is there any way that we could help the one individual on name changing at all as far as the expense for paying postage to go through all this hassle?
Well, has the person, that house been notified about it?
We notified all of the property owners adjacent to the street of the public hearings. We actually, we weren't required to have a public hearing before the planning commission, but we chose to do that. They were notified of that hearing and this one.
And did you have any comments from anybody?
Had one comment at the planning commission public hearing from someone that, not the person that was addressed 25th, but another person. I think she was a little confused. She thought we were changing it to 25th.
Oh, okay.
That was the only comment.
It's really only one property owner that's being changed the address on it. Right, so, okay.
I think it would help emergency responders if they get a call to that one house on Erman that is addressed as 25th. There may be confusion in finding that home.
Imagine, mm-hmm, yeah. Dick and then Bessie?
Yeah, I'm wondering where can the other street change? Where does, at what point along the road does North Albany become 25th if we do make that change?
It would occur at Crocker Lane and would carry through to Scenic Drive.
Yeah, that's confusing to be driving along a street and suddenly, poof, it turns into another street.
Yeah, so North Albany Road exists here. It would continue to this point, and the fire department is recommending that it become 23rd mainly because of the street names, I think, on this side. But this is the section that would be 23rd Avenue.
Yeah, first we have other, other streets, like Gibson and other ones there that run horizontally on that map that are name names rather than number names.
I think, it used to be at least, the naming convention was east-west streets were numbers and north-south streets were names, but...
And here in Albany, of course, a lot of those streets got named before that was part of the city.
It went around hills and stuff changes.
Right.
I was going to say, this is probably, the one with Ermine Street was probably the most confusing one of all to try to figure out exactly what we were doing. My husband's happens to be working right on Ermine Street, and so I went to deliver something to him today, and I thought, I'm going to check this out. So you get to the corner of Ermine and Ermine. Okay, then you go around. I mean, I almost got lost there because, I mean, this, I think, will do the continuity maybe for the fire and police department, but it is so, so curvy and so, I always, I've got to say, I still say, "A drunken sailor platted Albany." Because there's, you go to here, and all of a sudden, you're going this way, and then it picks up here. So I think anything we can do to help them, and by the time I got done, I think I was on 23rd, and it just so happens that a fire, fire engine and paramedic unit came in on 23rd. Thank goodness they didn't, you know, but yeah, I thought it was just kind of a coincidence that they happened to come to be right there. But I think that if they go Ermine to where it is and over, and then it'll catch up with the other Ermine to the left of Ermine Court, I mean, talk about confusing. But now, Mike, what about Ermine Street where it meets with 25th around that corner? How far up does Ermine Street go? I mean, because 25th, it looks like it might come around the corner, there'd be one, two, three, four houses on that corner.
Ermine currently, 22nd comes in, Ermine is this right here and this right here. So again, all of these green lots are addressed off of Ermine. When you turn, then it becomes 27th Avenue. So all of these that aren't highlighted are addressed 27th Avenue, so...
Okay, I see. So the one, because our maps don't look like that. So the one...
Yeah, I think all the maps on your exhibits simply show the highlighted section of street.
Yeah.
So all of these green are currently addressed as something Erman Street.
Okay, so the 25th will go, all right, well, I just think it's a good thing. I kind of agree with Dick on the one in North Albany, so it's just going to stop. North Albany Road's just going to stop and then continue on with another street name.
It's 23rd.
Okay, any other questions?
All right. Back.
Lloyd, did you...
Picking up on that same theme in North Albany, Dover's a good example that we ought to be coming back and changing the name of Dover between Crocker and Spring Hill because it's an east-west street. It goes there, and if we're going to go to the numeric going east-west, you go across Crocker and you've got 21st place or 22nd loop over there. You know, what we need to do is get specific with the naming of the streets at the time we're plotting subdivisions.
If there's a, if there's a good part of changing the streets that we're talking about now, it's that very few property owners are affected by it. You go into these developed areas and you change them, then obviously you've got more affecting them.
And picking up on Bessie's point about all the, you know, from an engineering perspective, curvilinear streets, that's, 15 years ago, that was one of the ploys of the planners to have traffic calming neighborhoods. You put curves in them, slow people down. But I'll tell you, it makes difficult finding places. You have Sherman in North Albany, and you have Sherman over here, and it goes for three blocks, and then it's missing for four blocks, then it picks up again. You know, we have some street naming problems, but I don't know how you fix them.
We had to use our GPS to get to the house.
Oh, yeah. GPS gets people out in the wilderness and never come back, too.
Unreal.
It may calm the traffic, but it doesn't calm the driver when he has to come back into town and look up the address again to try and figure out where.
Okay, any other questions? So, all right, is there anyone that would like to comment on these two street name change items? Okay, not seeing anyone, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:40 PM. And council, there's, would you like the first reading read, which is on page 36, and there's one on 38, too. So do you want to start with 36?
An ordinance declaring a street name change for a public street dedicated and named on the Cribs First Edition and Cribs Second Edition subdivision plats in Lynn County and declaring an emergency.
I move that the ordinance be read a second, second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance declaring a street name change for a public street dedicated and named on the Cribs First Edition and Cribs Second Edition subdivision plats in Lynn County and declaring an emergency.
For the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Yep, Rich?
The folks who, the two folks in either one of these, this one specifically and then the next one, they didn't do anything wrong, and they're going to end up having to be inconvenienced. I, it bothers me that, you know, they're sitting there being happy, and now they have to go through a bunch of rigmarole to catch up with us. I would like to see something like a, you know, it's not going to cost them much of anything, but it's a hassle. And, you know, give them a $10 discount on their water or something as a good faith. I mean, just pay, we know we're messing with you here. Thank you. And Bessie, by the way, having been a drunken sailor, I would not have done anything like this. I mean, there would have been far fewer curves.
You were taking street signs down.
No, running into them.
Yeah, Bessie? Just one other comment. As far as the people having to change, that is, I think, probably the most troublesome to me is to inconvenience the people. But in my former life, my job, that happened quite a few times where people say, "I didn't move, but here's my new address." You know, so it does happen because of necessity sometimes, you know, and it's really unfortunate and to those involved, I'm really sorry. But if it's a safety issue and it's going to allow the police and fire to get to the addresses faster, I think it's, you know, we have to do it. I don't, I do not agree that we should go ahead and start changing them to be north and south, the numbers and all that like. I think this is, this is just fine.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. So now the next ordinance is on page 38.
An ordinance declaring a street name change for public streets dedicated and named on the Clarewood, Benton Woods, and Benton Woods Phase II subdivision plats in Benton County and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance declaring a street name change for public streets dedicated and named on the Clarewood, Benton Woods, and Benton Woods Phase II subdivision plats in Benton County and declaring an emergency.
Adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Mike. Okay, next we have is, on tonight's agenda is a continued public hearing to hear public comments on community development needs that could be assisted with community development block grant funds and to hear comments on the city's consolidated plan and annual action plan. All persons wishing to testify tonight, please approach the microphone and first state your full name and current address, and please make sure you have signed in at the table, which I do have one person that's signed in. The public hearing is now reopened at 7:45 PM. And Anne, did you have any comments?
You had asked that I bring back any comments that were received between your last public hearing and tonight, and we did receive one email, which was included in your packet on page 43, and then we received a letter this week, which is on the dais from Joanne Zimmer. Both the email and the letter in support of the plans, and Joanne Zimmer also noted support of the process that went into developing the plans because she was a task force member. I did want to point out that page 68 of your packet will change based on the testimony tonight, and I did change it since the last hearing, and that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions of Anne? Okay, all right, thank you, Anne. And we did have one person that signed up with Curtis Bell. Okay.
Good evening.
Great to see you.
Good to see you, too. I'm Curtis Bell with the Albany Police Association and just came in support of the bond for the emergency services buildings.
Wrong hearing.
Wrong hearing.
Did you want, you signed up on the CDBG one?
I apologize, signed on the wrong sheet.
Okay, so, nope, that'll be fine. We'll have you come back up from business from the public.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I should have kind of questioned when I saw you sign on this. I thought, I don't know if Curtis would be on this item. All right, thanks, Curtis. Anyone else I'd like to comment on the CDBG funding plan? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone, and I'll close the public Okay, all right, not seeing anyone, and I'll close the public hearing at 7:46 PM. And counsel, the first resolution is on page 44.
Move adoption, resolution, oh, on page 44.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next is, um, the resolution is on page 200. And this one would be for the, um, the, the annual action plan for the CDBG program.
Move for adoption, resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? And for folks to know, we did go through, um, this, um, plan was done by a task force and also, um, we had quite a bit of discussion at last, um, council meeting that we had, um, a couple of weeks ago. So this is just a continued for action on this item, so. Okay, any more discussion on, this is on resolution 200. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And counsel, the next one is on page 228. This would be for the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan.
Move for adoption, resolution.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And this one would be authorizing to sign the CDBG grant application and certification documents as stipulated by HUD, and that's resolutions on page 234. Actually, it's not a resolution, I'm sorry, but it's just the, the plan. Was there a second? Okay, all right, motion's been made in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
And for the record, Mayor, was that authorization of the council to allow the mayor's signature in the, at the document on page 235?
Um, that's the next motion.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That would be on E.
Oh, it's on 233.
Um, two-
234, 235.
Nope, Anne, did you have a separate?
234 and 235.
Oh, 234.
I want to try and make clear in the record is I don't think we have, do we have separate resolutions that I'm missing on this, or is this simply an authorization of the council for the mayor's verification of the documents?
It's an authorization.
Okay, I was just saying the record should be clear in that regard.
Okay, so then we need to have a motion authorizing staff to submit the completed plans to HUD for review and approval. Okay, we need a motion for that.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. So Anne, you did a wonderful job. It was a lot of work put into this plan, so, yes. A lot of typing, I think you had to do, getting all that in, but thank you so much for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. So it's going to be a great program. Thank you. Okay, next is Business From the Public. And is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? So, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in Albany. I have a story that I'd like to share with you. My wife, Nancy, is a member of the Friends of the Library, and her normal shift, she works on Mondays from 10 to noon at the Carnegie Library Bookstore. She was in the process of exiting the Carnegie Library Monday a week ago, and, uh, by the main entrance, she fell from the top step down to the sidewalk. She was, uh, hurt severely, um, and she laid there. She had friends and coworkers gathered around her to see if she was all right, somebody called 911. And a car that was driving down Ferry Street stopped and two people got out to see if they could be of aid. The driver, her name is Jolene Kachel Krieger, I'm not sure about the pronunciation. She's a patient advocate for the Samaritan Albany General Hospital. The passenger was Ken Fandrum. He was an off-duty Albany police officer. Ken went up to my wife, excuse me, and leaned down and introduced himself, and said his name was Ken Fandrum. And my wife looked up at him and says, are you the officer on the motorcycle? And he said, yes, that was him. And, uh, sometime later, while they were waiting for the ambulance, somebody asked Nancy if she was going to be all right. She says, I am now. I'm in the care of a police officer. And that struck Ken very well. I got a call about 1:00 that Nancy had fallen and that she was at the emergency room in the hospital. When I got there, she was in getting x-rayed, and so I took care of paperwork, waiting for her. They came and got me and said that I could go in and see her. While I was in talking to her, Jolene came by and introduced herself and mentioned that she would been there on Ferry Street and helped, uh, helped her out. And she says, is there anything I can do to help you? I says, there's one item that I need taken care of. I, uh, I drove in from my house. Nancy's car is over by the library and she has no condition to be drugged. She was on drugs for pain. The, uh, she said, well, let me check with my police officer, that friend that I was with. And so she called Ken and asked if he'd help, and he did. I went out to the parking lot to get Ken, and I didn't know who he was. I did not, had not been told his name. He got in the car and he says, I know you. I says, I'm sorry, I don't recognize you. He said, I'm Ken Fandrum. I, oh my gosh, Ken, of course I know you. Ken and I go way back. Ken was when he started riding the, their police car, uh, motorcycle. I invited him to join us, our AMO group for our toy run and in the Veterans Day parades, which he did on many occasions. Ken drove my wife's car home and we came back and on the way back, Ken related to me the story about what happened. He and Jolene were in the process of going to lunch. They were going down 4th Street, and Jolene said, I'm in the wrong street. We should be going down 3rd Street. They were going to the Two Rivers Market for lunch. And Ken says, well, that's all right, just turn down Ferry, and you get there that way. So that's how they ended up going down Ferry Street and saw my wife laying on the sidewalk, surrounded by people. This was not a life-threatening situation. There wasn't guns involved or a bomb or plucking somebody out of the river. But these are two people that I refer to as everyday heroes. And I just wanted to say publicly to thank both of them for their service. And my wife is very grateful. She's done a great job of recovering. She's still sore and bruised, but, uh, she's been back and taking care of her duties last week, uh, this week, and, uh, she's, will enjoy complete recovery. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it shows the quality staff that we do have, so, um, that's wonderful, so, for Officer Fandrum.
And it does, yes.
Yeah, and his wife, but yeah. And I, you know, send Nancy, you know, my best, so had to have been kind of a scary little time for not knowing what could have happened, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And apparently, the, they're looking now at seeing if, uh, the, uh, expenses can be taken care of by, uh, uh, workers comp. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, is there anyone else from Business From the Public? Yes, Mr. Owen.
Dick Owen, O-W-E-N, at 810 Cox Street. There's a very short, I'll be very brief. Mr. Shepherd did a fantastic job of negotiating with me, and I see nothing wrong with his work, except there's one problem, and it's out of his and my area, and that has to do with the way that the sewer bill was increased and I refused to pay it because, uh, they were charging me for eight units when I only used two. History showed I only used two. All right, from that, the city has turned it over to the assessor, and the assessor is, uh, put it on the tax bill, not, uh, not a lien, but the tax bill.
We've heard all that. Mm-hmm, yes.
All right.
We're familiar.
Now, with what Mr. Shepherd has shown to me, it needs to come out of there. It's up to the city to clear that off before we go anywhere else with negotiation. Now, the second item is that we do not know how much sewage is going down my sewer. So I'm going to insist that you put a sewer meter on and we measure it. When you shut the water off, my city water, why you shut off any way to know what was going, or to bill the sewage. So thank you very much, and have a fantastic day.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Okay. All right, um, anyone else from Business From the Public? So, Mr. Clausen.
Jim Clausen, CLA USEM, 1403, 15th Street, Albany. I was, uh, I jumped in on a conversation the other day with, uh, Mr. Delapore about, uh, his, his quandary of what he was looking at with the, uh, the, um, vagrants and, or, I don't know if those were his terms, those are my terms, and the homeless underneath the bridge over there at the thing. It's interesting that that had come up because, uh, just, uh, maybe a month prior to that, a month and a half prior to that, I'd been driving through that intersection, there was a bunch of glass on the, uh, on the road, and I honestly wondered if it was because some, but, some of those panhandlers were out there in the street. And somebody slammed on their brakes or they got distracted because of them. I think it's, uh, high time that, uh, something was done about that stuff, and I think that some of the steps that you guys have talked about are probably some good steps to be taken. I do question one of them, um, uh, and that's, uh, because the, uh, the one where they step off the curb and into the traffic, uh, I would, I would assume that that law would be applied, uh, equally to people, um, asking for money from passersby in cars, and I wonder how that would affect the firefighters with their boots out. Is that going to be applied to them also?
That's exempt by state law.
Yeah. Okay. And then, uh, it's, uh, it's interesting, too, that, um, this stuff has, I, I read Hassel's blog, uh, occasionally, as I'm sure that many of you do, and, uh, he had, uh, somebody write in the other day about, uh, some connections between, uh, the city and looking into, uh, uh, different counties and stuff and getting some of the prisoners into the, into the Helping Hands as they were, um, during, I don't know how true that is, but the guy was, uh, claiming that. And, uh, when you look at some of those people that are there and how much they've grown and how supportive, um, the city has been of Helping Hands growing, um, it makes me wonder, too. It's not a real good, uh, thing to be, uh, so in a way, the city kind of created this problem, um, by, uh, uh, helping the homeless so much. You can only do so much with these guys because most of them are drunks and they want to be drunk, and they're out on the streets because they want to stay drunk and they want to be drunk. And, uh, no amount of, uh, cajoling is going to change that fact. It's, uh, it's just a fact of life. If, there's one answer to that, uh, I think as far as that, uh, bridge goes, if, uh, the Helping Hands thing were to move, uh, because this proximity of that is, uh, is, uh, pretty close to that tunnel, um, I was thinking that since, uh, the mayor pulled in some of those people, that maybe 35th Street and Jackson might be a good place to, uh, to relocate, uh, Helping Hands. I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem with homeless people, uh, being helped in your neighborhood. Be kind of hypocritical if you did.
I have some already.
Pardon me?
There is some already.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, that's good. And, uh, so, um, but I, I'm, in generally, I'm generally in support of, uh, doing something about that problem because I know it's a problem. I ride a motorcycle and going through there with those people out there en masse is, uh, wickedly interesting sometimes, uh, because they don't, they don't pay too much attention to the lights. I almost suggested to Mr. Delapore when he mentioned it the other week about putting sprinklers under that bridge, turn them on to, to clean off the waste and, uh, maybe even put some plants up there in the top to justify the water, uh, but, uh, but they probably wouldn't, it probably wouldn't bother them too much anyway, so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to bring an item forward? Yeah, Bill? Oh, you have to come to the podium, yeah.
Just a quick, this is the time to comment on the proposed ordinances, should we wait to-
Nope, this would be the time. If you've got a comment on the ordinances, yeah, go ahead and come on up, yeah. The, the proposed ordinances are going to be coming up in just our next agenda items, so, yeah.
Uh, my name is Bill Ortman, and O-R-T-M-A-N, and I live at 734 Baker, uh, right last house on the end of Baker's by the, the canal. And I spoke at the meeting Monday and, uh, went home that evening and sat down to check my email. And out the window, I noticed that there was a party going on out in the window out there, and so I told my wife, I said, I bet you if I set my video camera up, I'll be privileged to watch some people urinating out there in the field. And sure enough, in 15 minutes' time, I have here on video two male individuals who are out urinating in that field. They have a party, if you, if you want to watch this, they have a party going on out there. You will see at the end of this that one man takes a look at the, points down to the mess that they made there on the ground, and then up and leave, and leave that mess sitting right there in the field. I want to, you know, after going home and thinking about some of the things that were set up Monday's meeting, something kind of struck me, and that's when one of the counselors made the comment that you can't legislate behavior. Well, that's not what these ordinances are trying to do. What they're trying to do is to give the police tools to deal with criminal, or not criminal, illegal acts. Specifically, uh, the, the gross litter that takes place, the indecent exposure and the spreading of defecation, um, you know, dealing with the, the unruly noise, the yelling, the disturbing of peace that goes along wherever these things are going, are, you know, partying going place in these fields out there. Will this ordinance stop all the drinking? Heck, no. Is it going to stop significant numbers of people from drinking out in the public that? And the answer is yes. I know that because I've talked to a number of these individuals, some of these individuals I've had in class. They- They do not want to be, you know, cited, they do not want to be arrested, and they will curb some of this behavior. They will take some of it off of the fields and take it someplace else. In talking with some of these people, you find out that Albany is getting a reputation as a place to go to come and party where it's okay to drink out in the public. They come here just for that. They'll come here for a week or two and then leave. In fact, we saw a sign out there the other day, in fact, I think it was brought up, giving money to get to the next town just on the way. So, in short, you know, I want to urge you, I implore you to pass these ordinances. I want to remind you that, you know, as a council, you're here to protect the citizens, you're here to make this town, you know, more, as livable as what we can, and God, we have done such a great job in this town. I walk this town back and forth, and I just, what I see in improvements and the work that's being done, you know, I just hate to see something like this foul and spoil what Albany can really be. So, I urge you to please approve those ordinances.
May I address Ms. Ortman? I was the one who said you can't legislate behavior, and by all means or by no means do I want to not protect the citizens because people like you who are having to deal with this all the time. And what I was just saying is that wherever they go or whatever they do, we're not going to make them go to rehab, or we're not going to, you know, do this.
Absolutely.
And so, I didn't want you to get the wrong idea that I thought, well, we're not going to pass the ordinance because we can't fix, no. I think this is a good start in trying to help the citizens, because I remember, it's been about a year ago, on Gary Street down by, I think it's Arts Plus down there, where the lady said that she had to trim up her bushes because she went out one morning and found a camp in her bushes, you know, so, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I didn't, was not against.
Well, we, you know, the second step is, this is obviously, is to find some kind of solution, whether it's a detox center or some way to deal with this, because it's, you know, but this is a tool, though, you know, to, I think will do some good in stopping some of this behavior. Okay, thank you.
Step forward, okay, all right. Thank you, Bill. Okay, Frank.
Good evening, for the record. My name's Frank Moore. I live at, it's M O O R E, and I live at 2529 Hill Street Southeast here in Albany. My day job, I'm right across the street with Lynn County Health Department, and I just wanted to, I believe in some ways, add to what I heard Mr. Ortman say. I do believe that amending and prohibiting the possession of an open container of alcoholic beverage as well, it won't be a panacea, it won't eliminate that completely from Albany. I believe it's a quality of life issue for those of us who live here, and I also believe that it's, and who frequent some of our parks, Swanson Park, which is down the street from my mother's house, which has a bench with my father's name on it, was, is and was very near and dear to his heart and, and by extension is to me, and while I've not experienced it recently, there have been times in the past where I've had second thoughts about allowing my niece to take her very young children down to that park because of events that I've experienced there. So, I think on some levels, to me, like I said, it's a quality of life issue. One of the programs I am responsible for is the Alcohol and Drug Treatment Program for the county, which some of you may know. We do provide a lot of services. I would agree with Counselor Johnson that, no, you cannot force people into treatment, whether it's mental health treatment or chemical dependency treatment, but I do think this is, this ordinance would be a step in the right direction. The other aspect, one of the other aspects of my position with the county has to do with public health. I think the second ordinance, it's quite obvious, aside from indecency, some of the risks and hazards of people who use parts of our communities for public restrooms, so.
Thanks. All right, thank you, Frank. Okay, Curtis?
I'm Curtis Bell with the Albany Police Association, and I too would like to say on behalf of the Albany Police Association, we are in support of the open container and prohibition of depositive or discharge of human waste. They are fantastic tools that we as police officers could use to help keep the city of Albany safe and pleasant to live in for the citizens of Albany. We're also here to show our support for the bond on the emergency services buildings. That too would also provide great assistance in providing emergency services to the citizens of Albany, and I'd like to thank you for your support and your continued support for the Albany Police Department, and appreciate the time today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, seeing any? Okay, next is a routine ordinance, and this is on page 236.
This is an ordinance to levy assessments against properties specifically benefited by sewer and water connections, and the assessment of sewer, water parks, and transportation systems development charges for property described as Tax Law 8300 of parcel 10S 4W 25CA and site address 1980 Arroyo Ridge Drive Northwest and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance round a second time in title only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance to levy assessments against properties specifically benefited by sewer and water connections and the assessment of sewer, water parks, and transportation systems development charges for property described as Tax Law 8300 of parcel 10S 4W 25CA and site address 1980 Arroyo Ridge Drive Northwest and declaring an emergency.
Adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to ask a question. The map wasn't rugged. Is this outside of the city limits and it's one of those safety issues or, I mean, I didn't read what it was actually.
This is in the city limits.
It's in the city limits.
Yeah, uh-huh. It's just, it would be east of Crocker. Crocker would be over here.
I could, I put it in the G I S and I couldn't bring it up, maybe I spelled it wrong or something, but, so, the reason is why, are they not, is there no water lines hooked up there or?
This is a new subdivision, yeah.
Okay, all right, see.
A new subdivision.
I didn't get that from that, so.
But, what it does is, it simply allows them to pull their building permits and then they pay for these assessments at the time that they close when they sell the lot and the house.
Okay, yeah, because I, the map was, I mean, it was kind of real, a lot of details but not a lot of.
We have, we have no ability to levy an assessment outside of the city.
Yeah, well, that's what I, well, yeah, and this, I thought, that's why I couldn't bring it up, and I thought, I couldn't find a royal anywhere. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Next, you have an ordinance amending AMC 7840 to prohibit possession of an open container of alcoholic beverage in a public place and declaring an emergency.
Move for second reading in title only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending AMC 7840 to prohibit possession of an open container of alcoholic beverage in a public place and declaring an emergency.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Mayor, can I say something here?
Uh-huh, you sure can.
Yeah, I was, these are law enforcement measures. I tend to like to put myself in the shoes of the people who are going to be affected by, by these types of things, and we read about our veterans coming home after going back to Iraq and back to Iraq, back to Iraq, until their brains are pretty well scrambled, and they end up not able to live with their families anymore, they end up not being able to hold a job, they end up wandering around the country and begging, and it's not only veterans, but other people who tend to be on the schizophrenic side of things, wanting to live outside, just having a hard time getting by. And I was thinking of these people and really wondering if these ordinances were the thing we ought to do. I was waiting for the public hearing to see if anybody else would come up with these ideas. Nobody else came forward. On the other hand, my friends and neighbors did come forward, described a very unhealthy, a very annoying situation, and a couple of cases, very unsafe situation, and it, it made me think back to when I was first on the council 40 years ago, where Bryant Park has been made essentially unusable because of loitering in the park, sleeping in the park, urinating in the park, defecating in the park when the city was trying to have park functions down there with kids, and the city council at that time, I don't remember just what we did, we did something, but we curtailed the problem. Jim wasn't here, it was his mentor, Earl Law. I don't know if the things we did then were on the books, are still on the books, they probably are, but I suppose there have been, well, you can't do that kind of thing anymore. So, I'm led to think that we do have to have these rules to curtail this misbehavior of people, particularly along that path, and particularly around that path that goes from Bryant Street down to the swimming pool. I tend to think those paths that do not have a drivable, vehicle drivable road along with them tend to be a real nuisance. One happened over on South Albany, by South Albany High School, that had to be fenced off. There's another cut through on a block over in South Albany, this had to be chain link fenced and closed off. The Dave Clark Path along the riverfront, there's no road there, and so, that, I don't know if it continues to be a problem or whether that's been pretty well solved.
It's already been no alcohol allowed on the Dave Clark Path.
Okay, so that has solved that problem?
It's helped it, but you still got way down along the river.
So, one of the things I've been concerned about, a long time I've been on the council, is neighborhood inevitability, and particularly, a near neighborhood as well as mine, I got a rezoned, a single family, used to be zoned for apartments, got that done, got the historic districts in there, and I can see that this drinking, carousing is a major problem, and so, I'm going to have to vote for these, these measures.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, thank you, Dick. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Next, you have an ordinance amending chapter, AMC chapter 9.04 to prohibit the deposit or discharge of human waste on public property and declaring an emergency.
How about private property? Unless they come crap in my lawn, can I complain about that?
That's trespass, unless you've given them permission to be there.
Maybe a dog.
That's animal at large, unless you've given it permission to be there, which might be the case.
Dick's familiar with that one.
I moved that the ordinance be read a second time in title only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending chapter 9.04 to prohibit the deposit or discharge of human waste on public property and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, okay, well, thank you folks so much, and for, you know, we know it's been an issue for quite a while, and I want to thank our, our police chief, our police department, our city attorney, and everybody coming up with a good ordinance to kind of move forward on, so, yeah, but thank you.
Mayor question?
Uh-huh.
So, with the, with the emergency clause and then you approving, approved by the mayor's signature, when can APD start to enforce? Tomorrow?
Immediately upon the mayor's signature.
Okay.
I'll sign her right now, if you, if you want to get to work. Yeah, well, thank you, thank you folks so much, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you on that. And next is adoption of the resolutions, and we have three of them, and the first is on page 242.
Move adoption of the resolution on page 242.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is one, an item that came to us on Monday night.
Yes.
Yep, uh-huh. Rich?
This property, there was, one of the county commissioners said that he thought there may be a problem with it from a dump perspective. They searched their records. It appears to be clear, according to what Wes has said, the only thing, if it is, if we're going to do anything with it, we're going to put a bike trail across it or anything like that, unless we know for certain, there is nothing in that, because some of the things that could have been in it would have been pyrophoric. You dig in the, you dig in the dirt and you might have zirconium fines in it. Having zirconium fines, you know, they don't go away. I mean, that's, the reason they're used in nuclear reactors is because they don't corrode. Anyway, there was a problem with this same material in Coffin Butte, and they lost a D8 cat, so, if we take this, we need to make sure we don't dig there unless we know for certain there's nothing there.
We kind of already know on the part that's outside of this area that we already own, you know, the city has the old dump that we already own, and we have been told many times years back, there was a farmer that used to mow it, and he said there'd be little explosions coming out of the ground, but, but that's actually outside of, more west of what these properties are. So, but we already have that ownership of the old dump at the end of 53rd.
I understand that.
Yeah, right, so, so no.
My issue is if we don't know for certain that there's nothing there, we need to either one, find out, or two, we need to make sure we don't ever dig there.
Okay, yeah, good thoughts.
So, I guess, Rich, what are you suggesting that we tested before? I mean, because that was my question, you know, as far as where the old dump was, because...
My suggestion is that we, as part of taking it, I understand, we're not supposed to develop it. I mean, it's not supposed to be developable in those, in those areas, and I understand there is a trail through it now that people kind of use, that if we're going to, unless we know for certain, that when we decide we're going to put a trail in, instead of digging, you put material on top of it to make that trail instead of digging to make the trail. I mean, you know, Albany sanitation, or whoever was ran Coffin Butte, lost a D8 cat to the same kind of material that was possibly, quote unquote, there. I mean, there's also some radioactive stuff that's there that is, the level of radioactivity is so low that, well, in the stuff that Wachang had, the, the emissions of, they were in pico curries, and the level of radiation emanating from the sludge they were talking about was lower than the emanations coming from the Fasha on the state Capitol building, literally. So, I mean, you might see that in the paperwork if you look, I mean, I think it's fine that we take it as long as we're cognizant of the possibility, so we make sure we are good stewards of, of the possibility of a problem. so we make sure we are good stewards of the possibility of a problem.
Okay, good suggestion.
I think there'd be no way to go out and ascertain for certain ahead of time, you know, because somebody thinks that sometime in the past, somebody might have done something. I mean, I don't know how you would sample ninety-two acres. And we went through, we went through a very exhaustive process with DEQ and EPA when Rick Resite was identified and ultimately got the no further action letter, and they investigated the perimeters of the property, and everything was diminishing. Now, is that to say that at some point, somebody didn't take a dump truck and cross the property line? I can't say that they didn't, but I don't know how you would go around and sample each and every square foot to determine whether they did or not. I think your admonition about being careful with what we do in the future is a wise one.
Well, I'm simply saying that you make sure that it is listed, so there's no possibility that we will lose that information.
Ray?
Is there, not to go paranoid, is there any possible way to have the owner indemnify the city against in the future?
Wouldn't be him anyway. Only two places that would come from, and that would be Bureau of Mines or Wachang, who it's ZIRK.
Well, you can ask the owner, if he wants to contractually so obligate himself, I would be, it would be hard for me to imagine, if I were his attorney, why I would suggest he do so, but you can certainly ask. We could send Mr. Hodney to do that, but I don't think it would be likely to succeed.
I agree.
Yeah. It wouldn't be him that would have to pay for it anyway. I mean, he wasn't the one who put it there.
I was gonna say, the last whereas does say the city has been assured that there is no subsurface contamination or other known properties, so I'm wondering if that whereas is, I mean, been assured that there's no, you know, I don't think you can state that.
Do you mind if I say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
I think it's always a good question to ask. Is there something under the ground that we don't know about? And the bottom line is, unless there is something of record that can be presented, what we have as evidence is, are the records of the state who have identified sites in Albany that are of concern. One of them is the city dump site, and Floyd spoke to how that case was handled. That dump site is property adjacent to one of the tracks that we are accepting, but it has been monitored and essentially, the state has satisfied itself, and thus, we are satisfied with respect to that property. We haven't done an environmental assessment of the ninety-four acres. To do an assessment on ninety-four acres, in other words, go shovel testing, first of all, would be expensive, and there really needs to be some evidence, overt evidence, that would cause me to recommend that we go to that expense. On the other hand, I've, I know the donor, several of us know the donor as an honest individual, and we've asked him if he knows of anything that might cause us concern. I think that's just about all we can do at this point. As for being admonished that we don't want to go digging unnecessarily to build something across the property, I think that's a reasonable admonishment. I think I would be irresponsible if I did so. And I think that's just about all the assurance that I can give you, because I don't have any evidence to the contrary at this point.
Yeah, I would, I just come in, if you think about the property itself, and where the city dump was, if something was going to be outside of the confines of the city dump, it would have been most likely the grass fields where the current houses are in the 53rd Street subdivision, and we probably would have been running across it at the time of construction of those six hundred homes, because to get to either of the two sites under consideration here, you're down through the valley and down the trail of Grandma's house through the woods, not out where a dump truck is going to go to dispose of something.
I think mine is the only house that actually glows at night, so I don't think anyone else has to worry.
So, does your house glow because of your warmth and your personality?
I'm sure that's it, thank you. Thank you for saying it that way.
Okay, any other comments on this item, for this land donation, which is very wonderful for the city to get ninety-four acres of land donated, so, okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, and thank you Floyd also, with working with staff on this to get this donation, that's just very wonderful for Albany. Okay, next on page 244, this is another resolution, and this is restating uses of litigation settlement proceeds for public safety facilities and economic development. Wes, were you going to comment on this, or did council need any move for adoption?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We're going to discuss whether to divide it into two measures rather than one.
That's the next item. Yep, this is just for restating the funds that was discussed last week's meeting. Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next would be calling and measure election, and this would be on page 246, and this is a resolution, call on the measure election to submit to the electors of the city the question of amending the city charter to authorize up to twenty point three million dollars of general obligation bonds to finance public safety projects, declare an intent to reimburse expenditures and providing for related matters.
Move for adoption of the resolution? Second.
All right, is there a discussion? Dick, was this, this was the item, did you have a question on it?
I had a feeling, at one point I thought it might be a good idea, but I don't think it is. I want to say that I appreciated Wes's comment to a blog that, why didn't we use revenue bonds? And he said, well, there just isn't any revenue that's generated by the fire and police departments. I thought that was a good sensible answer.
They, they're actually, there are revenue sources, but they're not sufficient to cover the costs that would be needed for, to cover a revenue bond.
Big revenue like water and sewer.
I'm fine, okay, yeah, Rich.
There have been people who said that there were some folks who would, who might vote for a police levy but not a fire levy, and vice versa, and is there the possibility of breaking this into two pieces? I don't know what the nuts and bolts of that would look like, if, you know, if it's a cheaper thing to ask one time, or, you know, asking twice in the same sentence, I don't know.
There are costs associated with splitting it up. I mean, there are some underwriting costs for the bond sales, bond council expenses. They're relative to the size of the request, they're not huge, but they, I think Stewart at least quoted a multi-tens of thousand dollar cost, additional cost that would be associated with it today. So, that was one of the principal reason for why we initially thought of doing this, is that these projects have both been on the council's agenda for many years, since before I came here. The councils expressed to me on a number of occasions, different councils, that this was a high priority. We've had it in our strategic plan, where both were regarded as immediate needs, and now seem to be the cheapest time to be able to accomplish the task, because interest rates are pretty low and seem to be headed in a direction where they will increase, so that was our reasoning, it's no more sophisticated than that.
Generally, I would have cried and whined and gone on, but I guess what we're doing here is authorizing us to ask the people, it's their money, and they have the choice. So, you've taken all my whining and griping and, you know, thrown that out the window with an election of those people who get to pay the bill, so, okay, fine.
Okay, all right, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, all right, and thank you folks. And adoption of the consent calendar is next. I'll entertain a motion unless there's an item that somebody would like to have pulled off for discussion.
Number two, please.
Two, okay. Any others? Okay, motion for consent calendar.
I'd move for the adoption, as you said, consent calendar minus item two.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, item two is on page, what, 260? And Bessie?
Yeah, and I was just wondering, is just a question, to complete the upgrade cost for the fire department, ten million dollars is a lot of money, and I just wondered, why is it so expensive, and did the, I mean, I realize that we're going to do this emergency, you know, test and all this stuff, but ten million dollars is a lot of money, I just wondered, what kind of, what does that relate to?
Sure, the reason for the ten million dollar cost is, our department is a part of Lynn County Dispatch, which is a broader countywide radio system. So for us to unilaterally do any sort of improvement to our system would then mean that other departments would have to do the same. So, hence the high cost, the ten million dollar cost, is, we would have to replace in the county all sort, all our portable radios, all of our radios inside of our vehicles, as well as then some of the radios that the dispatchers use to dispatch us on. So, I mean, it's a whole massive change to the infrastructure of our system.
Okay.
This, on the other hand, this allows us, one, to purchase radios without using city funds and through a grant, and it'll allow us to communicate with the police department on emergency scenes.
Yeah, and you understand that, so, but we're still only, would be replacing the city's equipment, or would we be replacing other jurisdictions' equipment too?
Well, the grant money that we're asking for through Lynn County would purchase thirty portable radios, and we'd take each one of those portable radios and put them in our apparatus, so each apparatus would have a radio that would be able to be used to communicate with the police department. So, this part is just specific to Albany Fire Department.
Okay, all right, I appreciate, you know, and ten million dollars is a lot of money, and if we can get the grant, that'd be wonderful.
We figured you'd probably like a hundred thousand dollar free option better than a ten million dollar request for a whole new system.
Oh, yeah, so, okay. And with that, then I'd move for the adoption of number two of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, okay. All right, thank you, Shane. And next, we have a Water Avenue rehabilitation project, and this is on page 272.
Yeah, I'd like to just point out a couple things on this, is, first, this is a joint project with the railroad, they're going to be doing work to improve their tracks there on Water Avenue, and this contract is for the city to follow right behind their work and do the paving on the street. So, we're reaping the benefits of that settlement agreement that Mr. Delaporte worked on for so many years here this summer. We're anticipating the railroad will do that work this month, and we will follow right behind with our paving. The second thing I just wanted to note was, we actually have a local contractor who is the little bidder on this project.
That would be good.
Yeah. I guess local, maybe that's in parentheses, it's Knife River, but they are located in Tangent.
And they're very generous donation.
Excuse me?
Pipes underwater, are they in good shape?
Yes.
Knife River is also one of our great contributors to our concerts, too, in the summertime, for River Rhythms and Northwest Dartmouth Fest.
Which has nothing to do, though, with the award of the contract.
No, it doesn't. Since they're local getting awarded, we really appreciate them.
Just for the record.
Yeah, exactly.
Move the request to action on page 272.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The other thing I, Mark, this is the section that's on the railroad that's, almost has that drop-off, right, along the tracks, you feel like you're going to scrape the bottom of your car if you don't center it right?
Yes, it goes up to Harrison, there is, the next section between Harrison and Gary will happen the following summer. So, I think this is probably the worst section, but there is going to be another section that'll have to be addressed next summer, and that was just a concession with the railroad in that they couldn't do all the work this year, and requested to do it in two phases, and that worked for us.
There's a bottom scraper in that one, too.
Oh, it's just, I know, try to avoid it, but, yeah. Okay, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is appointing Kelly Giliott to the library board, and this was to get representation from gaps for the school district to be on our library board.
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is a report, and this one would be, is if everybody wants to get that plugged in on your calendars, too, because there's quite a bit of dates. So, this would be for adjusting the calendar for November and December, and Councilor Kellum, this is routine that we do each year to, that way, when it comes around the holidays that, as you could see, our regular council meeting would have been on Christmas this year, so...
I'm disappointed we're not going to be here.
And then we usually try to not have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, since a lot of people are out of town, but, so, is there, council okay with the schedule?
As of now, but, you know, things change because of the holidays and stuff, but, and I'm just filling in my calendar now, so, it's blimey.
Got it in mind, okay, and you don't need to have action on it, right. Okay, and next is business from the council. Rich, anything this evening?
I think I already sounded off.
Okay, all right, Ray?
I'm good.
Okay, Floyd?
Question from Mr. Shepherd. I've had questions asked about the landscape work adjacent to Oak in front of Ping's, asking when the city's going to finish the project.
Yeah, the city has finished the project. The city built a retaining wall right at the right-of-way along Ping's property, and as part of our negotiations with Ping's, to acquire the right-of-way, we paid Ping's thirty thousand dollars, and that cost was based on some bids he had to relocate his sign, which he has done, and then also to complete the landscaping on his property. So that area that is not complete is actually on the Ping's property, and he has been compensated to do that. We didn't, in our agreement with him, give him a deadline to do that, but I'd be happy to give him a call and try and get a schedule out of him.
That would be great. People are seeing as a city responsibility, even though we have a contract that says otherwise.
Kind of the wrong time to be planting stuff.
Yeah, get these underground work done.
Anything else?
No, nothing else, thank you.
Okay, all right, Dick, anything? Okay, Bessie?
I just wanted to say that it was a good sign that saw the construction trailer pull up at Loews site, so, it's kind of, at least, there's something there. And then, I just have one thing, I use Waverly Street a lot, and I know it's, you know, it costs a lot to have maintenance and all that stuff. You know, our median along Waverly, which is a very, very highly trucked, looks awful. It's got weeds and stuff, and I'm thinking, I mean, I almost felt like I wanted to just stop and pull the weeds myself, you know?
Thank you for bringing it up, because it has been bugging me, you're talking about kind of close to the commercial area, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so north of Fourteenth.
And, like I said, I know it's extensive, but I don't know who's responsible for that, if it's the same people that mowed the grass, or what?
Yeah, mm-hmm, street maintenance. It's right kind of by, kind of Fred Meyer's there, down towards Fourteenth, and it's only a concrete path, but it has just weeds growing up in the middle of it. Thank you for bringing it up.
Well, we're looking to getting that done.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be one. I'll be watching.
Yeah, thank you, Bessie.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Okay, that's it, all right, and I didn't have anything this evening, did you, Wes? Okay, and staff, have anything?
Picnic tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow night is the city picnic, and that's at five thirty, correct? And then, remember, well, we've got Cara next week, but also, Art and Air Festival is the next weekend, and it's going to be a great, great time and great fun time in Albany, so, we'll have a wonderful turnout again, but, and I know our park staff is going to be very, very busy, and a lot of, a lot of our city staff puts in a lot of volunteer time for the Art and Air Festival. Okay, with that, our next meeting would be August, for the city council meeting, August 26th, and our regular session is August 28th. With that, we are adjourned, and thank you, folks.